One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody in the audience on like a time delay or something?
Sounded like that.
So in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Just as a note, tonight we have our town manager Heather Lemieux is participating remotely this evening, and also our member Heather Sroka, as announced at previous meetings, is not able to attend tonight's meeting. We're going to begin tonight with public comments this evening from the Board. Any public comments from the Board this evening?
I have none.
And to pack, if you can unmute, if there's just a note that we're muted? Thank you. Are there any public comments this evening from the Board?
I have none.
None.
Okay. None. And any public comments this evening from the public? Any public comments from the town manager this morning? Or this evening, rather, this morning? This evening?
No public comment.
Okay. And we'll move on to announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight?
I do have one announcement. This is from the Council and Agent Director, Sudori. The Senior Center, the Eagle House, will be open as a cooling center, and the hours that they're open are 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM Wednesday, Thursday 8:00 to 5:00 PM, and Friday 8:00 to 5:00 PM.
Mr. Chair, I just want to announce that last night's band concert was canceled because of the rain, so they will use their rain date, so they will be going that extra Monday. So they'll be back, hopefully, weather permitting, next Monday at 7:00 PM in front of the TC Passios Building.
Okay. Thank you for that. So there's two important announcements tonight about the rescheduling and of the band concerts Monday. Also, if anyone who didn't catch that, that is, the senior center will be operating as a cooling center between the hours of 8:00 and 7:00 PM tomorrow, 8:00 and 5:00 on Thursday, and I think Friday, was that 8:03 PM? Or was that 8:04, Heather?
8:04.
Thank you. All right. And that's available to members of the community. Communications from other Boards. We did not receive any communications from other Boards this evening. So we are a little early for our appointment for the joint appointment with the school committee to fill a vacancy with the term to expire at the next election. And so I just want to just check in with the Chair of the School Committee, Carol, to ensure that enough members are present tonight. Okay. If you would like to take a moment just to call your meeting into order.
I will do that. At 7:02 or so, I, Carol O'Shanlon, will call this meeting to the Lunenburg School Committee into a session with the Lunenburg Select Board of Torus.
Okay. The school committee meeting is now in session. So tonight we have a joint appointment with the school committee, as noted. We have one applicant to fill this position, that is, the Honorable Peter Beardmore, who's here with us this evening. So Peter, first I want to invite you to come forward, if you wouldn't mind, and just take a moment to express your interest in this position.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight. Thank you. I apologize, I have my back to you, but I'll speak in this direction for the benefit of the cameras and the select board members.
And if I could, the school committee would like to join us, you're more than welcome to.
I think as long as you're here, I'm going to be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Feel free. So, good evening. My name is Peter Beardmore. I've never been referred to, I don't think, in my life as the Honorable Peter Beardmore, so Peter is just fine, or Pete, or I've been called a lot of other things. I live at 282 Pleasant Street. I was born and raised here in Lunenburg, went to school K through 12, graduated, fortunately, and have lived in Lunenburg for most of my adult life. Following college, I was an Army officer for four years, and have since, the last 24 years, worked in high tech, primarily in product marketing and marketing functions, in IT security, fraud, compliance, and risk management. I have a son, who is an eighth grader at Lunenburg Middle School, a rising eighth grader, and a daughter, who is a 2020 graduate of Lunenburg High School. She now studies theater and English at Suffolk University. I've always taken an interest in town government since I was 11 years old, and my mother ran for school committee in Lunenburg, and served for six years. Both of my parents served on a number of town boards and commissions during my youth. And I myself served as a member of the ZBA for almost a full term several years ago, and have served on the Finance Committee for the past three years, as clerk, as vice-chair, and as chair for the past year. For most of my first term on the Finance Committee, I also served as a liaison to the school committee, so I've sat in just about all of the school committee meetings for the last three years. And I also currently sit on the Municipal Building Committee. I'm familiar with the duties and the responsibilities of the school committee. I've learned and observed from watching meetings. I watched Mrs. Archibald's excellent series on PAC, and I've also read a number of documents that she's furnished me this week on the duties of the school committee, the operating principles, and a document for new members. And if appointed tonight, I look forward to the opportunity to work more closely with the members of the school committee and the administration in pursuit of the school department's mission. Tonight, I do want to take a few minutes to outline four areas where I think that there's opportunity for improvement, and areas that I'd like to help and encourage the school committee to focus on. But before I do, I think, you know, before I focus on where I think we need help, I think that there have been some really great achievements over the time that I've paid some close attention to the school committee over the last four years or so. First, you know, I think that the administration has done, you know, remarkable work in improving the overall professionalism of our faculty. They've really, you know, the professional development program has really grown, they've become leaders in their fields, a number of them, both inside and beyond the borders of Lunenburg. Very early in her term, the superintendent identified some of the gaps associated with some of the socioeconomic changes that have occurred in Lunenburg, and put forth plans to begin to address some of the behavioral and emotional challenges that some of our students have. And, you know, it's a really good thing she did, because those plans were able to be put into force as resources became available during COVID, and we were well ahead of the game, and I think, you know, those paid dividends. I think the investments we've made in curriculum have begun already to pay and to show results. They were, you know, really needed and long overdue. I'm excited about the civics curriculum, as I know that you all are and have participated in it. And I think that, you know, better alignment with state and regional standards will do well for us. And finally, I think that the school committee and administration should be commended for the job they did over the last 28 months in dealing with COVID. I think that, you know, there are a lot of opportunities to point fingers and say, this was done wrong, or that was done wrong, but overall, they did a really good job in shepherding us through an extraordinarily difficult time. So what about the future? I mentioned that there are four areas that, you know, I think that the school committee has an opportunity to set measurable and tangible goals, to garner resources and support from the community, and to ensure that there's accountability, and some of these will overlap a little bit. The first is safety, and certainly the most important one. I think this is an area that, you know, I've got a pit in my stomach over the events of the last several months, and years for that matter, in school departments. I think that this is an area, I have a fair opinion that it's an area that the school department and you and our public safety officials pay close attention to, but I think that it's an area that we can't discuss enough. And as a parent, I can tell you that I don't feel that I'm fully informed, and I think that there's work to do there. The second is in achievement. You know, I think we all think that we have a pretty good school system in Lunenburg, but I think we would all like to know that we're getting good return on our investment. U.S. News &amp; World Reports published a national survey a few months ago that ranked LHS as 119 in the state out of 378 public high schools. Puts us just inside of the top third. And my question is, can we be in the top fourth? Can we be in the top 25%? What would it take to get us there? I think that, and U.S. News, they might not be the right metric, but we should decide what is, and what our goals are, and what we want, and what should we expect as measurements to ensure Lunenburg taxpayers that our students are getting the best possible return on investment. The third area, very tied to return on investment, is budget. That's an area that I've paid close attention to over the last few years, for obvious reasons. But I got to tell you, and I know I have a reputation of a bit of a pessimist when it comes to the budget, I think we're in for tough times ahead. And it might not be this fiscal year or the next, but by FY '25, when the COVID funds start to dry up, and our contracts and line items start to catch up with inflation, I think we may be in for some tough times ahead, and I think we need to start strategizing and planning for that eventuality. And if appointed, I think, you know, one of the first things that I'll do is suggest that we form a subcommittee of the school committee to scrutinize the entire budget, not just the lines that are add additions and subtractions that the school committee tends to pay attention to during budget season, because there may be opportunities for greater efficiencies and/or reductions if things are not running efficiently. My final area of focus, and probably the biggest and the hardest one, is to better address communication and community engagement. And both are lacking, in my opinion, despite the fact that they've been identified, and there's been some effort over the last few years. And I brought along a visual aid, just for some fun here tonight. Bear with me. In my left hand here is a program from Grease. It was a musical that was put on at Lunenburg High School in 1987. And in my right hand is a program from Annie Junior, which was put on by Lunenburg Middle High School in 2019. And I'll let you all know that the guy who played Eugene the Nerd did an excellent job in the 1987 production of, it was Tony Award quality production. But what I want to show you is, this document, this 35-year-old document is about three times bigger than this three-year-old document. And every category in this document, except one, is bigger. The cast was bigger, the crew was bigger, the parent volunteers were bigger, the sponsors were bigger. Everything was about three times larger 35 years ago than three years ago. Except for one category, which is the faculty. Faculty was about the same, if not a little bit bigger, when it came to involvement in this particular activity. By the way, this one sold out three or four nights, three nights. And I have to wonder if we're just opening our wallets and paying for things that we used to do ourselves. I work in marketing, and, you know, a common metric that we use is called net promoter score, to kind of measure how we're doing in the eyes of our customers. And it's a simple calculation that you see on every survey that you've probably ever taken from a vendor. It's, would you recommend this product or service to a family or friend, family member or friend? And I don't know, and there are standards, and, you know, I don't know what our net promoter score would be in Lunenburg, I don't know what the standard would be, but I suspect that if we were to get a measurement, that we'd all want it to be better than it is. And I think that the way to achieve this is through policy and through performance when it comes to administration, through looking at means of communication, but not just the platforms that we're using for communication, but the engagement of those platforms and looking for ways to bring community members to bear. When I was a kid, when I think of the faculty members that shaped my life, and the members of the community, there were faculty members and members of the community. You know, I can think to Mr. Lamoth and Mrs. Brockleman in the high school, but I can just as much think of Newt Brazier, and Herbie Hill, and Coach Smith, and Dave Rogers, and people that the community really, you know, looked to, to lead big events in town, and to bring the community together, and were constant parts of the community. And I think a lot of those folks, we just don't have that magnitude of participation anymore in Lunenburg, partially because we haven't tried, and partially, I think, because some people have been turned away. They've been made to feel that their opinion doesn't matter, that their problems aren't cared for, and they begin to feel disenfranchised. And how do you build ownership when there's a sense of disenfranchisement? And so, those are the areas that I hope to focus on, should you appoint me to the school committee. I envision Lunenburg schools that are less a formula-driven district in the state of Massachusetts, and more of a participatory-driven department in the town of Lunenburg. And with that, I hope, and I'm sure, that you'll have some questions to ask. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore, for those comments, and noting those achievements, those areas of needed focus, and some potential methods to get there. I would like to provide the school committee first with the opportunity to ask you any questions. I will ask, if you wouldn't mind, just coming forward to the microphone. Again, you're welcome to join us here on the stage, so that way everyone at home can hear. I know it's going to be a little tit for tat, but however Carol sees me, Chair, Ms. Archibald sees fit, for her school committee to move forward, ask some questions, I'll turn it over to you.
Certainly. First thing she needs to do is lower this. Okay, thank you very much. First, I would like to ask if either Mr. Schoolen-Breeney or Mr. Laytonen has any questions they would like to address now, or did they want? Go ahead. Mr. Layton.
First thing he needs to do is raise this.
Brian Laytonen, Vice Chair of the School Committee. Thank you, Peter, for your service to our country, and also to the town. I knew you from when I first came on the school committee. I wanted to ask, just for you to give a little bit more to your background on your visits to the school committee, have you gone before you were actually a member of the Finance Committee, and just expand on that?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you for your question, Mr. Laytonen. So, I attended school committee sporadically, school committee meetings sporadically over the last 20 years, when there was an issue that gathered my attention, I guess, is the answer, it would be the answer to your question. The earliest in the last four or five years that I can remember was, I believe, Dr. Burnham's first school committee meeting. It may have been the second, but it was in August or September of 2018, and there was a brewing issue around the turf field, and the agreement that had been made years prior between the Bengals Organization and the school department, and a dispute that had kind of ensued in terms of the fairness of user fees that private organizations were paying to use school department resources. And I think you're aware that, you know, over the time that's ensued, we've had a number of efforts to really kind of smooth that out, and begin to address those issues, and I think we've done a pretty good job. Now, there was a lot of disruption with the Bengals Organization at the very beginning of that, and, you know, that kind of touches upon that theme of engagement that I brought up a little bit earlier, because, you know, I think that there's a lot that can be done to convey a sense of partnership with the community when it comes to working through and resolving those issues. The next issue that came around was, not that long after, the issue that inspired me to actually put my name forth for Finance Committee, was that there was a proposal to cut the French program in the high school. And I had a daughter that was in the program at the time, and I spoke out against it. And I also came to a Finance Committee public hearing on the topic where there wasn't a whole lot of engagement, in my opinion, from the Finance Committee, and that led to a conversation that led me to volunteer to be on the Finance Committee. So, you know, I do have a history of engagement, and I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I'm going to ask, closer to the microphone, I'm going to ask the white elephant in the room question, FinCom. So, to, how do you feel about potential conflicts between, as you have been the liaison for school committee, I have been that for FinCom, and I see places where I see conflicts? So, I'm gonna, I took the time to come up with a potential conflict and ask you how you would deal with it. It is a ridiculous thing, so I'll just start with that, but I think it illustrates my point, because the first thing I did was, I called the Ethics Commission to ask if it was possible to have somebody serve on both boards, and they said yes, as long as neither position was paid. I'm not quite sure what one has to do with that, but that's what they said. There you go. There you go. So anyways, so here's my, here's my example. Suppose the school committee made a decision to submit a capital plan item to build a swimming pool at each school. The school committee had discussed it, and despite the fact that you disagreed, they had voted for it, and this came to you at FinCom. What do you do with that? Because by our protocols, when you are in the public, if something is passed, you can't say that was not a good idea, so, because it's all part of the team. So, what would you do with that? That's my question.
So my answer is in 15 parts, Mrs. Archibald. Thank you for your question. So I too called the Ethics Commission, but for a different reason today, and actually the Finance Committee discussion did come up. And I've also had a number of conversations since my last conversation with you about this, and my opinion has evolved a little bit, so let me update you on that before I try to answer your question about swimming pools. So, I think that while I don't see a pragmatic conflict in the majority of the duties of either the school committee or the Finance Committee, and I do think that there are efficiencies potentially to be gained, same way that Mr. Passio served on the Finance Committee and the Parks Commission at the same time. I recognize that there are more than a few eyebrows that have been raised about this proposal, and that perception is reality, and that that's not a good idea, and it's probably not worth the perception that there is a conflict. And so, what I would propose to the members of this joint committee is that, if appointed to the school committee, I'm not looking to resign from the Finance Committee immediately, I think that there's work that I need to help the Finance Committee do, and some goals that we'd like to accomplish together. But I can't see serving on the Finance Committee and the school committee through budget season. And so, I would need to make an exit prior to that period of time, so before the end of the year, ideally even before that, is what I envision. To answer your question, I think that it would have to be dealt with very carefully. But you raised another question in your question, which, I don't know if you intended to do so or not, I suspect you did, about your protocols.
Yes.
Because I've spoken to your protocols and your operating procedures in the past, and I think you know that I don't agree with them entirely. And I think that when the time comes to discuss those, I'm looking forward to those discussions. I've read them a couple of times over the course of the last couple of weeks, and I have to tell you that I don't think that they serve us well, particularly when it comes to exactly that circumstance that you brought forth, the "there will be no surprises" clause, and a couple of other clauses that effectively turn, and I'm using hyperbole here, but the school committee into an omerta or cabal of unity, where I don't think that it's warranted. That being said, I recognize that as an appointed member of this elected board, I will abide by those rules until such time as I can convince you otherwise that we should change them. And so, that's my answer. All right.
All right. Because in working around your answers, oops, back over here. In working around your answers, you brought up another point that I need to make sure that we are very clear on, that the real constituents of the school committee, by law, are the children. We don't want the parents upset, we don't want the townspeople upset, but if I may, as the Lorax said, "I speak for the trees, for they have no voice." We speak for the children, for they have no voice. And that's very important, and I know that's really not something you 100% agree with either.
Yes, you're correct. Because I don't see how you can solely represent the children when you are budgeting with taxpayer money and you are elected by registered voters. I see an inherent conflict there. But frankly, I also see that a strict view of that has put us in the position that I've just described earlier, when it comes to this net promoter deficit and engagement deficit. I think that there are some people in Lunenburg who believe that the school committee is more united in support of the administration than it is in support of the people and the students, and the need to resolve issues. I'm not saying that I agree with that position, I think it comes with a lack of context sometimes, but I think that that is a, that perception issue is something that needs to be addressed. Now, do I have the answer for how to fix that problem? I can't say that I do. I'm not one of these "I alone can fix it" types, but I will probably push and prod, and ask, and re-ask, and apologize, and do all of the things that I do, to try to move the committee in the direction of doing both, of doing a great job for our children, to accomplishing our mission, exactly as it's written, and I have no problem with the mission, but to do so in a way, I think, that supports community engagement and support more holistically.
So, I will come back with a couple of points on this, that the, trying to think of the best way to work around here, that when we work as a group, and you're not seeing that we do much for the day-to-day thing, we cannot. Our job as the school committee does not touch day-to-day operations and how things work that way. The superintendent is charged with carrying out our policies. Now, if there is a big problem in the day-to-day, then we have two choices. We take with the superintendent, in her evaluation, we say, "We don't like this, and this needs to be addressed," or we change the policy. Those are the only two options. We don't have any other options by law. That's the way it works. So, I would answer that in that way, and, of course.
So I agree with you entirely, and I've read the law, I'm familiar with education reform in the 90s, and the changes that came with the Student Opportunity Act, and the local policies as well. And as I've said, I think we will probably have some disagreements on some of the rough edges, but the points you just made, I think, are valid points. I think that there are opportunities, through policy, through supervision and hiring and firing of the administration, of the superintendent, through budgeting, that many of these things can be pushed along, and that progress can be made. Through benchmarking, and measuring, and goal-setting, and holding people accountable, and all of those things that are not day-to-day activities, but are direction-setting and policy-setting, I think that that's how the job should be done by a board of directors, which is effectively what the school committee is. You know, and when it comes to some of the issues where, you know, controversy has ensued, sometimes that's a matter of, and I don't know, because I've never sat in a policy subcommittee meeting, it's really hard to come up with, you know, hyperbole and examples, and, you know, that you just don't know what's going to happen, and to really pressure-test those policies. policies in advance, and I'm sympathetic to that. But sometimes, you know, that just has to be done, and sometimes you have to revisit a policy out of sequence, and that can be done as well. So I think that there are ways to do that, but I think that, you know, the school committee has, in its toolkit, plenty of levers and knobs to do a great job. And I just don't subscribe to the "we can't address this because we're not allowed." I think, you know, give me a rulebook, and I'll find a way to win the game. And I guess that's the approach that I think we need to take.
You had mentioned some subcommittees. I was curious if you had any in mind that you'd be interested in participating in.
Thank you. So I'm not up to speed on your reorganization, or who's been assigned to what subcommittee and different organizations within the schools as a liaison. I'm not up to speed on that, having not been the liaison for the last few months. You know, I think that I can do my fair share. You know, initially, while I'm trying to work my way out of Finance Committee and on to School Committee, I may have a bandwidth issue, you know, just being really honest about it, that I think I'll have to work through. But I'm open to really any, where I think that there's a potential area that I can contribute, or where just my presence will be helpful in sharing and helping to communicate information or advance the goals. You know, I mentioned a budget subcommittee, which I don't think is something that exists right now, I think it probably ought to, and, you know, I would suggest that we do that, and I would certainly love to participate in that. You know, but beyond that, I can't be really specific.
Thank you.
You have a member on Zoom.
Oh.
No? I'm sorry, I can't, maybe I'm not, nope, I'm looking incorrectly. Thank you. Sorry about that.
I wanted to ask if I could follow up after?
Absolutely. I'm going to open up to the Select Board, starting with Mr. Dwyer, and we can come down the line with any questions that we have for Mr. Beardmore.
Sure. Mr. Beardmore, you're, on every meeting I've seen you participate in, whether it be town meeting or on the Finance Committee, you always come to those meetings exceptionally well-prepared, and you outline your opinions clearly, and I wouldn't say concisely, but very clearly for the public at large. But I guess I'm wondering if you could give me an example of when you've come to a meeting in the town with an opinion and been persuaded by other peoples and had your opinion changed?
That's a great question. I'm sure there are many, and none come immediately to mind as you put me on the spot. But, you know, what I can say, in my capacity as chairman of the Finance Committee, and actually my entire tenure in the Finance Committee, is that I have been enthusiastic about discussion and shaking out issues. And also, when I'm wrong, saying I'm wrong. So let me give you an example. It came after the fact, and it didn't really matter in the grand scheme of things, but in the town meeting that we had in June of 2020, if you recall, I made a motion, Mr. Passio seconded it, to basically reduce the capital plan in half at that meeting. And the thinking at the time was, we just did not know where the state was at for funding, it was the beginning of COVID, it looked like there was massive economic impact happening, the federal government hadn't stepped in yet, and we just didn't really know what was going to happen. And my fear at the time was that we were taking too many funds from the operating budget, putting it in capital planning, that we might need to operate later in the fiscal year. And so my strategy at the time was just spend what we absolutely need to spend on capital in June, and then come back in November and figure it out when we had a better view. That opinion was vigorously opposed by the town manager and by most of the members of this board. The motion failed, and the capital plan passed as proposed. I was wrong. And I admitted as such many times over in Finance Committee meetings in the, you know, couple of years that have ensued. You know, so I guess when I'm wrong, I don't have a problem saying I'm wrong.
Sure.
But, you know, I'm also, as evidenced, you know, and I think you all saw it this past year, I have no problem with being a lone dissenting vote either. And, you know, I'm just as happy to play that role.
Thank you.
Mr. Franco?
Thank you. My notes refer to you in the third person. I will now change that up to the first person. Mr. Beardmore. So first, I want to say that I think you are an exemplary public servant, and I thank you for your dedicated and honest service to both country and to town.
Thank you.
You know, maybe I haven't necessarily agreed with every position you've taken, but you have always been intellectually honest, thoroughly prepared, everything. I think you are a great public servant. I like you on finance, I think you would be great on school committee. So what am I about to say? My position is not a Peter Beardmore thing. It's an appearance-of-conflict thing. And while I have no doubt that you personally would be able to navigate this situation, my concern is over appearance and the precedential effect of having the same person, not you, the same person serving both roles simultaneously. So my concern is that, for example, in the future, four or five years from now, if something like this comes up, and it's a much longer period of overlap, the people will dig back into the annals of what happened and say, "Is there any precedent for this? Has this ever been done before?" And on the record and on paper, the answer would be yes, if we approve it. They're not going to recall the special circumstances, that it was not budget season, or that it was a short time, or that it was Peter Beardmore. They're only going to know that one person occupied both of these positions simultaneously. So my question that comes out of this is, I would love to see you on School Committee, and I would like to see that appointment be unanimous. Is there a way that we can make this not overlap? How long are we talking about, number one, do you envision right now this overlap? And is there a way that this appointment could be done in a way so that your term does not overlap? I pose that to both, the joint committee as a whole.
Yeah. Thank you for your question, Mr. Franco. So first of all, I appreciate your position about the perceived conflict, both your perceived and the public's perceived conflict, and your comments about my service as well. And I would just remind everybody, like, the Finance Committee, everybody needs to understand, has virtually no power. I mean, the power of the Finance Committee is purely power of influence. We participate in making recommendations on the warrant and a town meeting, but we have like literally one power, two powers. We appoint members to a couple of other committees, the Capital Planning Committee and the Building Design Committee, both of which are advisory committees, I might add. And in very limited, very rare circumstances, it's happened once in my tenure, we approve an interdepartmental transfer. That's the extent of our power on the Finance Committee. School Committee is obviously very different in its scope of responsibility and authority. So I just want to bring that to your attention, if you were not previously aware. But I'm also very sensitive to the perception of conflict. I'd also add that, and I'm sure you've done the homework, there is no prohibition of this anywhere in our bylaws or charter. Any member of the public can serve in an elected position and in appointed positions simultaneously. And the school committee is an elected body, and the Finance Committee is an appointed body. And we, you know, until a few weeks ago, we had a member that served on multiple bodies in town, including the Finance Committee. To answer your question directly, there's a potential out, which is currently, I think, the school committee is not scheduled to meet until August 19th, or?
We will have a meeting mid-August to talk about the set protocols.
Okay. Well, I want to be in that meeting. I want to be in that meeting. So the Finance Committee will meet this Thursday, which is the 21st, on the 28th, and I believe on the 11th of, but we are meeting twice in August. So, I mean, there's a potential course of action where I could be appointed tonight, work with the Finance Committee to reorganize and set the calendar and path and plan that I've begun to work with them on, to facilitate some level of continuity, and, you know, resign and be sworn in just prior to the next school committee meeting. And that would give me probably three Finance Committee meetings to do that. So that's a potential, I'm not saying I agree with it, but that's a potential course of action. There was one other thought that I had there, and it just escaped me, so maybe it'll come back.
Yeah, let me just add, first of all, I understand that the Finance Committee has no binding authority for sure, but obviously, the persuasive authority is very substantial. You analyze these things, you get into the weeds, and, you know, people rely on that information that comes out of there, right? I mean, it's a very, that's testament to how useful that committee is, is that people defer to the opinions that come out of that. So it has, de facto, it has a ton of power. And, I mean, if there's a way it can be engineered so that there is no overlap, I mean, if that circumstance can somehow be engineered, I'm totally in, I'm all in. So, but, and, you know, I just, I am concerned, I mean, possibly, maybe, another workaround is you're on the school committee, but you're a non-voting member for a month. But still, where is that going to be reflected?
Yeah, it'd be hard to kind of get it into the minutes or the...
In the present.
Yeah, I don't know. So I'd like the vote to be unanimous as well, Mr. Franco, and, you know, if it took a commitment to do that kind of engineering, I would be happy to make that commitment, given the calendar the way it is right now, as I understand it. I think that that could probably be accomplished. The other point that had escaped me a moment ago, that is just a point of information, which is, the Finance Committee is a seven-member board, and there's currently one vacancy with no applicant. So this would create a second vacancy on a second-member board, so I just want to, on a seven-member board. So I just want to make you aware of that, that, you know, and it is a committee that really needs a full panel to function the way it ought to, as prescribed by the charter. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Alonso?
So, wow. I don't think in my whole tenure here, I've ever seen an interview with a joint committee with one applicant for one vacancy last this long. Okay, I have to say, this is kind of a first.
I'm having fun, Mr. Alonso, though, so you know.
I don't, I just say that as by matter of observation, not as a criticism of anybody, because the dialogue's been very good. You know, my first comment would be one of kudos for somehow managing in this to get the word "omerta" in this...
It was on that, what's that game?
As a civilian, believe me, that has special meaning for me, so. And also, I want, I should, I feel like jokingly, I should ask you, have you really thought about how you feel about being on the school committee? But I think you've, 40 minutes later, I've already answered that. On the more serious side, I would say first and foremost that I will echo some of the things my colleagues have said, both on the school committee and on this board. You and I know each other for a long time, and I would say that, you know, in your engagements in public service, there is not a time when I have not felt that you didn't elevate the conversation and brought really critical thinking and clear vision to your opinions about how things should be, and I appreciate that entirely, and I think that's an incredible quality, so I definitely want to echo what Mr. Franco said. I think you are really an excellent, you know, candidate for this kind of public service, so thank you for all of that. I also would like it to be unanimous. I think it's very interesting that as a candidate before us that's looking to have a vote, that you take, as you always have, strong positions on things that may not be particularly popular with people who are going to be voting in one way or another, and yet you still take them, and that's exactly why you should be on these places. My only concern has been one that's been mentioned, and that is the conflict and the precedent that Mr. Franco said, and I think, I think what I'd like to propose, so we can say, yes, this has been done, but only for a set time-certain window. I need to hear that, you know what, you don't know how long it's going to be, but it's not going to be past this date. So anytime it comes up, we're going to say, you know what, I agree that the transition with you leaving the board, the Finance Committee, would be good to have you kind of help them in there. I know you have, this Thursday, you have your Finance Committee meeting, and I know you're reorging. This would be a great time to shepherd them and help them, you know, formulate that. But it has to be, from my mind, it has to be from a time certain. When I came tonight, I was like, you know what, I'm going to vote for him regardless. And I think we're so close to this, I would like you to commit to say, for everybody's sake, that, you know what, I'm only going to be here for this amount of time, whether it's another three meetings of the Finance Committee, or till middle of September, whatever that is, I want it to be certain. Because otherwise, I really, with that set, I have absolutely no trepidations about voting for you. I think you'd be an excellent member of the school committee, as you are an excellent member of the Finance Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Alonso. So, again, just to offer a little bit more perspective, the, since I've been on the Finance Committee, we've kind of taken the summer as our summer season to kind of look at special projects. We've got like half a dozen of them right now, they're kind of on the list, of which we haven't made a lot of progress yet this summer. And I don't think we'll accomplish all of them, certainly, maybe ever, and certainly not before I leave. But typically, the way that we've kind of measured this out is, the summer is, you know, effectively the first fiscal quarter of the year, right? So July, August, and September. And then, you know, things start happening in October, although certainly not as much as what happens in Q3. And so, you know, a drop-dead date of the end of September, I think, would be more than reasonable and more than generous. I would have committed to Mr. Franco's engineering idea, but, you know, I think that the end of September would certainly give us more than due runway to do what we need to do. And it's, you know, effectively one quarter, and probably no interaction with the school department, for that matter, during that period of time. I mean, the one issue that is bearing down on all of us, as you're well aware, is, you know, debt financing of new buildings, and, you know, now the discussion around, do we build a new elementary school, and those kinds of things. But the mechanics of setting up a financial plan have very little to do with school committee policy, right? So I don't see any potential issues there.
So my only follow-up would be, only because I want to hear specifically, so is that a date you would commit to?
I would.
No later than, you would resign no later than September, end of September?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That would be sufficient for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alonso. You know, I'm going to do something a little shocking here tonight, I don't have any questions, but I have comments. I have comments, several.
Those are more frightening sometimes.
Sometimes, sometimes. Yeah, I mentioned when we were having this discussion with Mr. Scoll and Brini, when he was coming before us to seek appointment to the school committee, that this is one of the, this is really our only opportunity to offer influence onto the, aside from being a regular voter during regular voting sessions, to offer influence into the operations of what is the second. I think that we're an executive board, but certainly in many fashions, the school committee is in many ways as well. But I think that there's no doubt that the school committee is on par, I would consider to be our sister board in town to the Select Board, because more than half the budget goes to schools. And so there's a lot of money from the taxpayers that goes through the school committee. You know, as a citizen, my, I appreciate all the achievements you identified... you identified, and I agree with them. I appreciate all the areas of needed focus that you identified, and I agree with them. I would also add that I think that you're... in the dialogue between you and Ms. Arshinbo, who I have a ton of respect for, and certainly she knows that, I think that I probably side a little more with you. I think that the charter gives the school committee a little bit more authority than it gives us in certain areas. And specifically, it does give a little more authority to the school committee. I wouldn't say over day-to-day, but specifically by the charter, you know, rules and regulations for the management of the public school system and for conducting the business of the school committee, you know, that's a pretty substantial charge. But it's also the charter reads that the school committee shall have the general charge and superintendence of all school buildings and grounds. And I would just ask, you know, current members, you know, rhetorically here, how many times a year do you go into the buildings? How many times are you looking through them, you know, exercising that general superintendence? Or is that being outsourced or being delegated down? I think that there's more work to do. And it's one of those things that I know that we all have a capacity concern, but the school committee, unlike any other board in town, has a very specific charter-driven charge of actual responsibility over property and grounds, direct general superintendence that's not being exercised. It also, in my view, that's not being exercised. It also has, you know, the adoption of the budget. And my observation has been that the superintendent provides to the school committee a qualified budget that she thoroughly explains and thoroughly details to the school committee, but that is not a collaborative process. It is a report and an explanation and often what seems to me to be an agreement. There are some questions, but it comes out that it's not a collaborative product. And I think that I, as a citizen, I have an expectation that it is a collaborative product. And I think that your viewpoint here is certainly aligned with mine. I think that there's a value that you add to the school committee. I've worked with you in other capacities, Mr. Beardmore. You and I have talked on the phone for hours at end to kind of work through and sort through conflicts, and I think it's been very successful. And you and I have been here, and we've landed here a lot of the time. You are certainly a reasonable person. I have found you to be a wonderful person to talk to, to bounce ideas off of, to help formulate my own ideas better. And I appreciate the value that you add to the school committee. You absolutely have my support.
Very much.
I agree with my colleagues that there is an obvious apparent conflict of interest. You've heard tonight from the chair of the school committee that she reached out to the Ethics Commission. We did the same thing. I think there was a question from us of, is this an ethical issue? We went back to the charter. We looked. The town manager looked into this as well, because it does strike us as, hey, this is a committee that has a huge part of a budget, and then there's a finance committee which has a big voice over if this budget gets through. I'm... I think as a chair of a board, that you have to be shown a little bit of deference here, because a transition may not occur in only three meetings. And you've been working on a product to get the school... to get the finance committee to a point where you guys are trying to set new policies, new process, new agenda. I think you need to be given... afforded a little bit more time to be able to complete that. And so, I am completely in agreement that, you know, end of the summer, I was actually thinking September 21st. That's what I wrote down over here, but September, because that's the end of the summer, but September 30th, no difference. I think that I would support you remaining on... you serving in both capacities with a commitment that you will... and I think we can probably form this as a motion, that you resign. I think there's minimal opportunity for conflict. I understand the scope of what you're trying to get done on the school committee. It is not budget season in September. It is really administrative what you're trying to do, and I think that there's time to do it. But it's also, I think, important, as Ms. Arshinbo mentioned, that, you know, the school committee represents the students. And so, when the school committee gets going, I think it's important to have a full board and to make sure that you're a seated member. So, I will support your nomination tonight with a commitment by the end of September.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. I greatly appreciate all of your comments, and I share the same level of admiration for you. So, thank you very much. I had on my list of things, one more thing that I wanted to mention, and I purposely saved it for the end, not knowing that the end would come nearly an hour later. But I do have a disclosure to make, and this was the reason for my call to the Ethics Committee today, just as I made a call when I was appointed to the finance committee. And I will, if appointed, make a public disclosure in accordance with the law, but it's important that the members of this joint committee hear it prior to voting. My former spouse is an employee of the Lunenburg School District. She's a foreign language teacher in the middle high school. The state of Massachusetts does not recognize former spouses as immediate family members, and therefore, the nature of that relationship, for all intents and purposes, there is no conflict. Where a potential conflict exists, and I had a lengthy conversation with the attorney of the day at the Ethics Commission today on this, is that we have a financial arrangement to take care of our kids, which is a formula-driven arrangement that involves both of our incomes. And as a result of that, if appointed, I will recuse myself from participating in contract negotiations with the LEA and on voting on salary-related items pertaining to contracts with the LEA. And that is really the only area where... and, I mean, it is so nominal, it really doesn't matter, but a dollar matters to the Ethics Commission. So, that is the course of action that I'll take, and I'll put all of that in writing when the time comes.
Thank you, Ms. Beardmore. Before I turn it back over to Carol for members for questions from the school committee, are there any additional comments or questions from this board? Mr. Franco, you look deep in thought.
Well, I mean, maybe this should preface my vote ultimately, so maybe I'll reserve my comments until we vote.
Okay. Ms. Arshinbo, I believe you have Mrs. Skoll and Brini who would like to make a comment.
Mr. Jeffries, when you asked me, I think it was in December, about what I would do, one of the things you pointed out was this superintendent's of the building and the grounds. I don't know a whole lot about the inner workings of education as it is currently done today. And so, one of the things is, I think in April, we did a tour of the buildings. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. But last week, we also went into the superintendent's office, the building there. They walked us through the curriculum revamp. They walked us through data regarding testing and metrics they use to measure children. So, I think that I want to report to you that we are doing that. And as somebody that, like I said, was really a novice, it was an amazing thing to watch all of this data that I only dreamed about on the back of baseball cards now being generated for kids and helping them. So, I think that that's something that you'd asked us... you'd asked me to do, and I'm grateful that you did that, because it's helped me educate myself about what it is to be, you know, running a school district and being the administration. So, just to give you an update, we are doing that.
Thank you, Mrs. Skoll and Brini. I appreciate that.
Just a couple of very quick things. First, I was going to say, some of the things that you don't realize happen actually do happen. I know that your feeling is they need to be communicated better. But here's the dichotomy. As Mr. Skoll and Brini is talking about this very detailed data that's being done to drive and increase in achievement in the kids that has been worked on by our curriculum team, we were there for like two hours going over this very, you know, honed-down data. And I believe the comment was, we don't need these long curriculum presentations. The meetings are too long, Mr. Beardmore. So, you see, it's... there's some of this and some of that, you know? It can't all happen in the public eye because the meetings are too long. And, excuse me for my comment, but Mr. Beardmore does know where this is coming from. We do have a good working relationship. I'm not anticipating you're joining the group to make our meeting shorter. I'm just saying that out front. So, I'm saying that. So, at the end of the evening, I look forward to discourse, respectful discourse, which is what I have always experienced from you in the meeting setting, but knowing on the school committee, it has to be in social media. It has to be everywhere, respectful discourse. And I know you always have a good idea. And we will listen, as we always do, but it's not a marketing thing. They're kids. It's their education. So, you and I will go around on this quite a bit. I have no doubt.
Nor do I have.
Okay. Is there anything else from the committee?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And with that, I will ask for there to be a motion to appoint Mr. Beardmore with the noted contingencies of...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would move that we appoint Peter Beardmore to the school committee to finish, well, until next May, where he would have to run or the seat would become open, to election with the express commitment of Mr. Beardmore that he would resign from this finance committee no later than September 30th, 2022.
Second.
All right. And since this is a joint meeting, let's do this as a roll call vote. Would you mind rolling your members, Madam?
Aye.
Chair.
Mrs. Skoll and Brini.
Aye.
Mr. Whitman.
Aye.
Aye for myself.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Okay, I'll comment before I vote, but I want to say this. This is the problem for me. I support you fully. I can't support the concept or be party-setting the precedent. That said, I want you to have a mandate, and I won't stand in the way of unanimity, and therefore, I'll abstain.
Mr. Franco.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
And an aye for myself, and the motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Beardmore.
Thank you very much. I think we crossed the Jack Rabbit threshold of long interviews.
Well, long ago, long ago.
Thank you.
I do appreciate Chairwoman Arshinbo's comment about brevity not being part of the school committee with the addition, but it was a good addition nonetheless.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore.
And now that you've gotten...
I have a motion there.
Oh, sorry.
If you may adjourn your meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the school committee.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the school committee at 8:02 PM. I'll start here.
And I...
Aye.
Mr. Whitman. Aye.
And I for myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The school committee has convened at 8:02 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. We're going to go to our 7:25 appointment this evening, meeting with Town Council regarding the purchase and sale agreement and license agreement to purchase streetlights. And I apologize, Elizabeth, for falsely identifying you as a member of the school committee from this far away. So, if you may, Town Manager, if you want to present this, that'd be great.
Thank you. And I'll just... you did the introduction. So, initially, Town Council Adam Costa began the discussions with Unitel. Due to Liz's experience and expertise in this area, she has headed up the discussions and negotiations with Unitel for some time now. So, I will let her go review the process that we took, as well as the two agreements that are required to purchase the streetlights, and then any major points of those terms that she would like to point out, and entertaining questions.
Okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
You're a little low.
All right. So, I took over after somewhat in the middle of a process. And the process for purchasing street lighting is laid out in the statute. And the first step in this process was an informal request for pricing. And the company reached out with an informal quote. And then, the town proceeded to issue a letter of intent to purchase the streetlights and that's to satisfy the notice requirements laid out in the statute. And after that, I came in after some back and forth about the pricing. And so, when I came in, there was some confusion about the price because of the informal quote that the town received, and then the quote that was given after the notice of intent to move forward. I went back and forth with the company and discussed the tariff, which is how the price is laid out as approved by the Department of Public Utilities. And we went back and forth on some details in the price as it was laid out. And that took some time. And then, after that, we began reviewing the agreements that I have before you tonight. And we've had three meetings with the company to discuss the terms and conditions of the agreement. One is the purchase and sales agreement, and that lays out all the terms and conditions of the purchase. And the second agreement is the license agreement, and that lays out the terms and conditions for having the streetlights attached to the poles that will still belong to the company. And so, the first step is to execute the purchase and sale. There's one outstanding issue remaining in there, and it just deals with the insurance that the town has. We still have to have one more meeting or discussion with Unitel to discuss the insurance and whether or not there's an issue with that. And then, we'll have to lay out the details for the closing date. And the final price should be what you see in front of you. However, there is a true-up period after it's signed and when the streetlights are actually purchased by the town. And that's because of the formula laid out in the statute. They have to account for any replacements that are done, any streetlights that break or are replaced, or any installation of new fixtures, which there shouldn't be any between now and then. But there's also a depreciation factor, and that could make the price go up or down depending on the net unamortized investment. And that's all a boring way to say, that essentially, this price that you see before you could change after the agreement is signed, but that could be in the form of a check or a small amount of difference that will have to be paid. And the license agreement remains in effect throughout our entire ownership of this street lighting. And so, that... the agreement in front of you is basically the terms of having those fixtures on the poles. Anytime we do a replacement or upgrade, we will have to notify the company. If there are any inspections or if the fixtures have to be moved, we have to get permission, things of that nature. And finally, once we sign these two agreements, the next step would be to do a closing, which we sign the bill of sale that's included as an attachment to the purchase and sales agreement.
Elizabeth, I want to just ask if you can direct us to the page that you're looking at that identifies what that cost is?
Yes.
And we're looking at the... unless you notice us found this.
Yeah, it's on page 2.3, section 2.3.
Thank you.
That's also exhibit C.
Yes.
I'm probably looking at articles.
But yeah, article 2.3. It's in that paragraph.
Tom, what document? Which one are you in?
This is the purchase and sale.
Got it. Thank you.
So, 2.3.
Thank you.
I also am looking at that price and going through the exhibits that they sent me that break down the costs. I did reach out to the General Counsel of the DPU to confirm that all of the costs laid out there are as stated in the tariff. So, this is a formulae price. It's not something that really is negotiable. It's approved by the Department of Public Utilities in a formula.
Okay. I'd like to provide the board with an opportunity to ask... oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth. Were there any other updates you were looking to provide this evening?
No, I haven't been able to answer any questions.
Yeah, so I want to provide the board an opportunity to ask any questions to Council.
I may have missed it in your initial...
I may have missed it in your initial presentation on this. How does the $89,600 or so compare to what the original estimate was?
That was my question too.
The original estimate, and I had a feeling you would ask that, was $87,646.84. And that was in the informal proposal that we received before the notice to proceed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any additional questions from the Board?
I have none.
I have none.
And to the Town Manager, I believe we had a pretty substantial authorization at town meeting for this that more than covers this amount. I think that was, that total number was like $260,000 or something to that effect, $265,000, is that correct?
No, the appropriation will cover this. It was around $90,000.
Got it, okay. Okay, I don't have any questions.
I do have one additional question, unless you're going to go over the licensing. Is the licensing, it's not a payment form. Are we paying for the licensing fees year after, over year? Or it's just an acceptance of an ongoing license that we have permission to have this equipment on their poles?
Yes, so the license is our permission to attach the streetlights to the poles. And the only cost associated with that would be for moving the facilities upon request, or if it's our own doing, which I was assured that would happen very infrequently because everything else that's attached to the poles is in a different location on the pole.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank you for coming this evening. I know our last appointment ran a little bit late. But I want to thank you for coming this evening. This is one of those things that I think we all identified a couple of years ago as being a real value add to our community. And I appreciate the update this evening and look forward to this coming to conclusion soon. If you had to give us an estimate this evening for when you think that we'll be closing on this, what is your best guess expectation on this?
We're hoping to have an agreement for you to sign in the next couple of weeks. And in that agreement, it will state the closing date.
Excellent. So before we get into the shorter days when lights run long, that's good to hear. Thank you again for your time this evening, Council.
Thank you.
And to the Town Manager, any final comments before we part ways this evening with Council?
Just that I appreciate all of Liz's help through this process. She's done an excellent job on that to MTC as well, our Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Same to you. All right, next in our agenda this evening, interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. I know that these were all appointments as well, but we do have an interview for appointment to Agricultural Commission, the term to expire June 30th, 2022, with Jennifer Duffy from 684 Flat Hill Road. While Ms. Duffy comes forward, I just want to advise that I was contacted by the Chair of the Agricultural Commission, who overwhelmingly endorsed and supported this appointment this evening and requested for us to bring her on to the Agricultural Commission. I assure you that you do not, this does not need to be as long as our last one. Usually, these are about a minute or two. This is a pretty straightforward thing. So if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, saying your name and address, which I already listed, but if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address and what brings you forward this evening?
Sure. My name is Jennifer Duffy. I live at 684 Flat Hill Road. And I'm here today to support the agricultural and keeping up of gardening and livestock and all those good things in the town of Lunenburg, which is why I moved here in the first place almost two years ago. And I am interested in maintaining that culture in this town.
Excellent. I'm going to open to the Board for them to ask you some questions about your background, experience. So starting, any member can feel free.
I don't have any questions, just I thank you for coming forward and volunteering, and appreciate your willingness to participate
Thank you.
on the Agricultural Commission.
I don't have any questions either. I also want to thank you for coming forward. Well, actually, I do have one question totally unrelated. I'm just curious, what kind of engineering?
My bachelor's degree is in chemical engineering. I work in biotech.
I agree. Totally irrelevant to the point, but thank you.
Do you have any agricultural operation at your home right now? Are you part of a farm?
I have two horses at my house, and I have chickens, which I sell eggs to a small number of people.
Excellent.
And just because I feel like we want to tie this to the other interview, are there any Agricultural Commission policies that you really feel that you don't agree with?
I was not here for the beginning of that conversation, but no.
Well, it's good that you weren't, and I'm saying that as a joke. Thank you for offering your services to the town.
Yep, and I would just ask the Town Manager, if you can just confirm the date of this appointment, for how long this is going to go out to. But Jennifer, thank you for coming forward. I know that you said you've been in town for a couple of years. How do you like it so far?
I like it. I plan on staying, so.
Excellent. No, I thoroughly enjoy, I thoroughly enjoy living in Lunenburg myself. You know, I have some goats in my house, and you know, they're really, I mean livestock are always great animals. And I grew up raising chickens and pigs as well. So there's just something about it that just.
Yeah, it's very rewarding, I feel.
It is. So thank you so much for coming forward. And you know, with this, I think we are going to look for an appointment to the Agricultural Commission. But Town Manager, would you mind just confirming that date?
Yes, because the date we have on our agenda means that if we appoint you, it was two years expired. So I don't think that's accurate.
We have that date in front of the committee, but I will take advantage of that.
Okay. What we're going to do is, we're going to move to appoint you tonight. And at a later meeting, we need to modify the date of this appointment. We will do so. You do not need to be present for that. Are you comfortable serving a term as much as three years?
I am.
Okay, so we'll appoint you for one, and then we'll probably have another meeting next week, or not next week, but our next meeting, and just modify this, the time for that. Is there a motion to appoint Jennifer Duffy to a term to expire June 30th, 2023?
So moved.
Second?
Any additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, so you are supported. So the next steps for you are to go to the Town Clerk's office and get sworn in, then contact Mr. Allison, Chair of the Agricultural Commission, for when the next meeting is.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Terry, for being here with us tonight. We're, a couple more things on the agenda, we're a little behind. We had a lengthier interview tonight. So to the Town Manager, for the Town Manager's report.
Thank you. So tonight, I'll start off with the existing vacancies. There are vacancies on the following committees. One vacancy on the Finance Committee, two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, one vacancy on the Historical Commission, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested in serving on any of these committees can find the application form on the town website, complete it, and send it to the Select Board's office. And if you have questions on roles and responsibilities for these opportunities, you can contact the office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. For current employment opportunities for the town, we currently have the following employment opportunities: a Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant, which is a part-time, non-benefited position; Facilities Director, which is a full-time, benefited position; three Heavy Equipment Operators, which are full-time, benefited positions; a Library Assistant Position, which is a part-time, non-benefited position; Meal Site Manager at the Council on Aging, which is a part-time, non-benefited position; Paramedic for the Fire Department, which is a full-time, benefited position; Police Officer, which is a full-time, benefited position; Production Technician for Public Access, which is a part-time, benefited position; Van Driver for the Council on Aging, which is a part-time, non-benefited position; and Videoographers for Public Access, which are part-time, non-benefited positions. More information on these positions can be found under Employment Opportunities on the town website, and you can find out how to apply. An update on 925 Mass Ave, which is the old gas station, which is a continued goal of mine. I met with the Brown Fields Coordinator from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency regarding our proposed assessment work yesterday. And due to some questions that came up at this meeting about access and site control, I contacted our Tax Title Attorney, and he relayed that the final foreclosure judgment that was issued by the court on July 6th and recorded at the registry yesterday. This is the deed to the property, and officially transfers the ownership of the property to the town so we can go ahead and do the work through the EPA without any further communication with the previous owner. The personal property items on the property that were left behind, such as the pop-up shelter and contents inside the building, do not transfer to the town, only the land in the building. So I will work with the owner of the personal property items to clear those out in the near future. I've also contacted our insurance company, Fupless Parkville, as we'll now need to carry a special policy on the property until it's disposed of. Update on extension of remote meeting participation for public meetings. I sent this out through the townwide listserv, so everyone should have received notice of this. The legislature voted on Thursday, July 14th, to pass a bill that was a simple extension of allowing remote meeting participation for public meetings until March 31st, 2023. As the Governor was at an estate this past weekend, the Lieutenant Governor, as Acting Governor, signed the bill, and it went into effect immediately. The provisions of this bill follow the same guidelines that have been in place since the COVID public health emergency was first declared. Boards, Commissions, and Committees continue to hold fully remote or hybrid meetings without the in-person forum requirement until March 31st, 2023. An announcement about the Flat Hill Road Culvert Project. As the Board is aware, we had submitted a small bridge program application to Mass DOT in March 2022 to supplement the funding for the Flat Hill Road Culvert Project. This past Thursday, we received notification that we were awarded the maximum grant award amount of $500,000. Mass DOT has indicated the notice to proceed on this board would be issued by September 1st. So in the meantime, we have notified our engineer of the award, and the DPDW Director and the engineer have already begun assembling the documents we need to submit to Mass DOT. Due to the timing of the award, we'll make all the easements, make sure that all the easements are in place, coordinate with the utility, and the engineer will put together the bid package for advertisement. The bid is scheduled to be advertised in January of 2023, awarded sometime in March 2023, and estimated that the project would be completed by December 2023. An update on the fiscal '23 state budget. The fiscal '23 state budget from the Conference Committee was released this past Sunday and was approved by the House and Senate yesterday. The DLS has issued the updated cherry sheet estimates, and the final cherry sheet figures are an overall increase of $54,417 from what was included as estimates at the annual town meeting for state funding. Date on the Financial Management Letter Comment on a Fraud Risk Assessment. To follow up on that meeting with our auditors regarding the one remaining comment in our management letter, I received an updated quote to perform a fraud risk assessment. Based on the amount, we will be able to do this work this fiscal year. Due to the amount of reward credits we receive through participation in various risk management programs through MIA, we have sufficient funds that can be used to pay for this assessment. In other meetings, events, and announcements, as the Lunenburg Farmers Market will be every Sunday till Sunday, September 25th, and the Historical Society Building is open during the farmers market. And as Vice Chair Alonso stated, the, since due to the last night's cancellation, that date will be extended. So the remaining dates of the band concerts will be on July 25th, August 1st, August 8th, and August 15th. And again, they are held on the lawn in front of the TC Passios Building.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to just make a comment on the Town Manager Report on two things. First of all, I want to thank the hard work of the Town Manager and her team for getting, for applying for this Flat Hill Road Culvert Grant and getting the full amount. As people may remember, when this was first budgeted, this came in, what was estimated, it came in almost doubly engineering, which put it way out of reach for what we had already associated with that project from the budget. This is a huge, huge win for the town, and I want to thank the Town Manager for all her efforts and her team for securing this. And also thank the good word that our state delegation put in at the State House in awarding this too. So that is number one. I also want to comment on the fraud risk assessment that on our audit management letter, we've had several things that are now with this fraud risk assessment addressing the one remaining thing, which again is a kudos to the fiscal management of the town, you know, led by the Town Manager and the Finance Director, Karen Broschew. So I want to publicly thank both of them for this. These are excellent, excellent reports.
Concur. I want to just ask the Town Manager a question about the, the, let me just step back. The $500,000, half a million dollars for Lunenburg coming through the state is, or their grant is an incredibly big deal. And that, you know, we definitely didn't think that we were going to get that. I think that we always try to reach a little bit. And we were hoping, I thought we had a good project, but really, all kudos goes to the Town Manager and the team for being able to secure that grant. I just want to ask for clarification, because there's two projects going on on Flat Hill. One toward the bridge, and then one closer to the orchard. Is this funding for the project closer to the orchard or the project closer to the bridge?
It is for the bridge project.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Madam Town Manager. Again, huge, huge add to our community. And as always, I think the weekly reports that we get from you are, many people will say, are the most informative part of these meetings. Or at least the most succinct part of these meetings. Thank you, Town Manager, for the report. I'm going to move to current business. We have in here tonight discussion of the 300th Anniversary Committee Charge. So my expectations for this discussion tonight really is to bring some awareness to the fact that Elaine did reach out to a couple of different communities to secure what their charges were. Town of Norwood, Town of Milton, Barry Whately, which I didn't even know was a community in our state, and then Concord, Massachusetts. And so these are in here for discussion. Since we do not have a full membership here tonight, I am not looking for us to make any votes tonight on anything, but just to kind of have a broad discussion for a few minutes here on any thoughts, any things that stand out, anything that we liked, so that way we kind of know how to tailor, target, and also to identify if anyone wants to take a stab at this for our next meeting. So I'll turn it to the committee. We can also delay this discussion in more detail. It is a bit of stuff to review for our next meeting when we do have a full membership.
Mr. Chair, I will say that I didn't get a chance to read these in advance of tonight's meeting. I'd like to review them more thoroughly and would offer a suggestion from one member that we review these and come back with, each of us come back with solid notes about what we would want to be in this charge. I mean, it's a charge for a celebration, so it doesn't have to be like a multi-page document. I think we could probably do it in a page or so and just choose from these what are the salient points about setting up a committee and what their authorities are and what their mission statement would be, and just elect the committee and let them go. That would be just a basic framework. But that would be my recommendation, is that we read them and come back at the next meeting.
We all in agreement?
I concur with that.
Yeah, I generally agree with that. I mean, we could do it in a page, but why?
Well, I didn't say anything about the point size.
No, I agree with that. I want more time to look at this too.
Yeah.
And I'm glad Concord's in there too, because if anybody's doing it right, it's got to be Concord.
Wow. Wow. I don't know where to go with that.
Is that your idea?
With all apologies to Barry, Milton, Norwood, and Whately.
Well, no, I didn't say they weren't doing it right. Well, no, I didn't say they weren't doing it right, I'm saying Concord.
Where is Whately, by the way? Where is Whately?
I believe out west.
Oh, wow.
Whately.
Whately, W-H-A-T-E-L-Y? Yeah, I would imagine it has to be somewhere where we don't travel often, so, okay, probably the southwest corner of Massachusetts.
Maybe near Florida.
All right, someone's going to look this up while we're sitting here.
Or Washington, Mass.
All right, so we do have two sets of minutes from May the 24th and June the 7th in our documents, I'm sure we've all had the chance to review them, Elaine does a wonderful job on these always, if there's any comments or motions to approve, if there are any comments or motions to approve, June 7th, I just want to confirm that we had full membership here.
There's no absentees, I just checked that.
Thank you.
Nobody was missing from any of these meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of May 24th and June 7th as presented.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion passes, and the minutes are approved. For warrants, here we go. We have warrant deductions, the amount of 753,932 dollars and 17 cents. We have an accounts payable warrant, in the amount of 1,571,852 dollars and 57 cents. We have a payroll warrant, in the amount of 728,704 dollars and 54 cents. Now, are there any action items this evening from the board?
I have none.
None.
None, all right, let me just look at my notes. No, I will note though, I know there was a community-wide communication, so we've been operating for the last couple of years, this probably could have been in an announcement, we've been operating the last couple of years with, due to the pandemic, with suspension of open meeting law, that was set to expire on the 15th, and then over the weekend, the lieutenant governor was able to sign an extension for that until next year, so we are able to continue to meet remotely, boards and committees are able to continue to meet remotely, I know that we had discussed this at a previous meeting, I also contacted our state delegation, I spoke with Ms. Senator Cronin and Mike Kuzmeric, talked to Mr. Kuzmeric a couple of times about our overwhelming opposition to the House version of the bill that would have allowed this, he noted that there was support for the Senate version, and that, and that House leadership was in favor of the Senate version, so it's good to hear that, that something was able to get through here, so that way we can continue to meet remotely, and I know many, many boards and committees have depended on this, it did affect, I know the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, we had a canceling meeting last night, due to lack of quorum, because we had an in-person meeting, which was our first one in quite some time, because we posted before they, they passed all this, so just want to make that kind of note as a follow-up to an action item, were there any other action items from the, from the board this evening?
I do want to add, if I may, Mr. Chair, a, a recommendation for this board, you know, when we all, I, I think I speak for the entire board, when we heard what the House version was, and all the mandates that were put in there, and the unfunded mandates, and potential fines, and all these things that were put in there, and we were all kind of gassed that 160 people, I don't know how many people voted for it, could come up with something as horrible as that legislation, well, just calling, calling it what it is. I think it would be good if we could come up with what we think a revised remote meeting legislation would look like, that would best suit what we've found, I mean, I think the hybrid meetings are something that, you know, we started a little bit, but now through the pandemic, we've done, and we should, as a board, try to relay, not what we don't like, but maybe what we do like, and try to be, take some positive action in relaying to our state delegation what we'd like to see in that proposal. Not necessarily that every, every meeting, for instance, mandates that it has to have remote, you know, remote participation, but that it allows for, you know, because obviously different towns have different budgets for their remote access, whether it's through, you know, public access television, or whether it's through Zoom, or whatever, these all things cost money, but we should be allowed to do them if we can do it, but not be mandated that each meeting has to have them, so, I just posit that as, we should put that as an agenda item before the, the March deadline, next year deadline, and get it in early, so that our state delegation knows what we're looking for.
Would it be beneficial prior to the, to invite our delegation, any members, to come to discuss it?
Probably after we have a proposal, I think it would be good.
All right, I will make that note, so that way we get that on the calendar to discuss on the agenda later in the year. Are there any other action items from the board? Do we have any committee reports this evening?
I'll do that, FINCOM is going to be meeting Thursday.
Stormwater task force will be meeting on Thursday as well.
Excellent.
There was a council on aging meeting this morning, I had a conflict, but Ms. Roka covered it for me, so we'll await her next week, or two weeks from now, to see if she has anything to report from that.
Okay. All right, and then for upcoming meetings, we have upcoming meeting on August the 2nd, August the 9th, we're looking to have a workshop August the 16th, and August the 23rd, so four meetings in August, sounds like, I want, I want to make a note that the workshop on the 9th likely is going to get rescheduled to the 16th, I will not be here on the 9th of August. Certainly, we, the board is, will continue to meet on the 9th, so are you able, Mr., Mr. Vice Chair?
I don't believe I have any plans to not be here, so yes, I will be able to cover, I believe.
Excellent. All right, this evening, we also have an executive session planned, and so I will ask the clerk to read the, the motion for executive session.
Are you going to go over public comments?
Oh, I apologize, public comments, so before we get to that point, well, we do want to give the public an opportunity this evening to provide some comments, thank you, Mr. Alonso, are there any public comments this evening from the public?
Mr. Terry, anything?
North of, Northhampton, that's good to know, Whately is just north of Northampton, so somewhere near Greenfield.
No, not that far north, not that far north.
All right, any public comments this evening from the town manager? No.
Only just to add on to Vice Chairman Alonso's statement about drafting proposed language regarding remote meetings, we do annually have in our delegation, and they like to come in right before the session starts, so in order to get any budget priorities or anything like that, you know, give them leeway to be prepared for the session, start of the session, so I think that would be good timing then as well.
Thank you. Do we have a tentative date for that yet, on our kind of long-range calendar?
Yes, I have to look at the schedule of meetings that we put together, but that should be end of January.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments this evening from the board?
None.
Mr. Franco.
Yes, I just want to say that Elaine always does a great job with the minutes, but I just want to ask specifically here, that given the nature of the appointment that was made to the school committee tonight, that a little more detail be included as to the nature of the reservations that were expressed, and why specifically that the joint session made the appointment that it did, and, 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 you know, the rationale, that it was a limited time limit, that there wasn't budget season, all of that, so, just so that there's an historical record, that this was more exceptional than a rule, from my perspective, I would just ask that the minutes reflect that.
I concur. Any additional public comments from the board this evening? And if the clerk may read the motion to enter into executive session?
Move to enter executive session.
Oh, you have to read it as, as written.
Oh, sorry, what did I sign up for? I move to enter executive session and to adjourn af, after exiting executive session, pursuant to MGL, Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 21, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair, so declares regarding police union.
Second.
This is a roll call vote, Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Aye. No, sorry. Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Alonso.
Aye.
And an aye for myself, so the board is in executive session, and we will exit after, as, as the, as the motion, right, we will, we will exit the meeting after entering, after exiting executive session. To those at home, thank you for joining us tonight, and staying tuned with the affairs of the select board, we really appreciate your, your participation, your watching, I know that there's a lot of discussion that happens at home, so thank you for that, and continue to please reach out to us, send us your emails and feedback with any comments, questions, or things you'd like for us to discuss at a future meeting, have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.